overwhelming market rise, right? What that does, it creates a bubble, an artificial bubble, and heaven forbid that bubble bursts like it did in 2007 and 2008. Because then everyone suffers. The people who are left, the ones who can barely afford their rent, the ones who are just paycheck to paycheck paying off that last mortgage. If they get screwed, if for whatever reason the market comes crashing down, they're the ones to suffer. The people who have money, they've got lots of money in the savings account. They've already paid for their second and third home. They're fine. So my concern, in my years of experience in property management, what happened in 2008, 2009 with the housing crisis, with these predatory lending businesses, they were taking advantage of people who couldn't afford to pay their rent, yet selling them really expensive homes outside of their budget. People have cracked down on that, and the federal government, the state agencies are cracking down on that. Realtors have learned. However, what we're now seeing is a rise in the same sort of predatory lease agreements done to renters. People come here, they move here with stars in their eyes from Tennessee or Portland or wherever, and people are renting to them at $5,000, $8,000, sometimes $1,000 more per month than they can actually afford. They don't know any better because they just got here. You show up, you're done. You go online, try to find some housing, and they're tired. Craigslist and Zillow and Hotpads and all the ads there are just sending you to these large corporate business structures. This small guy, the guy who owns 12 units, the guy who owns 20-unit building, he can't actually financially keep up with those ad buys. So he's not actually getting enough renters. He's not seeing a line out of his door. They'll get one guy every one or two weeks. These other guys, you know, they're paying a bunch of minimum wage college kids out front, spinning signs, "Come and hey, come and see the apartments, come on in." And you actually, if you've ever tried it, because I've done it for years, I'm a secret shopper as part of my job. If you've ever tried to go in and get a lease from these guys, they don't negotiate. They just hire somebody at $11 an hour, sit in front of a desk, look nice in a nice suit, and they say, "Well, that's the price, take it or leave it." And if you say anything else, if you try to say, "Well, you know, I have a good credit, I have a good job, can we negotiate the price? I want to stay long term," they go, "Nope, next." And there's five people right behind you, ready to go sign that lease. So we're seeing a lot of this predatory behavior. And it's not that I am vilifying these guys because they're just doing what the market allows them to. And that's fine. If that's what the market allows, then that's what the market allows. I'm here to tell you that we, as the residents of this city, we can vote in a different market. We can create what I like to call a Burbank-style rent control that targets these large 50-plus-unit buildings, 100, 200, 800-unit buildings, and put restrictions on them. Just those guys, they're the ones unbalancing the scales. They're the ones putting that power into hands of these corporate franchises. And the little guy, the renter, the guy who owns a duplex, they're the ones getting shafted, right? They're the ones who are losing out on the ad buys, on the responsible tenants. The prices are going up, they're coming down. I saw a sign the other day, it was a guy with a triplex, and he had a two-bedroom with a loft for $3,500. And it was just around the corner from, it was Verdugo and I think First, right around the corner. And it was a small, little side street away from the big hustle and bustle of like the Avalon and those big guys. And I walked in and I looked around and it was dead. There was no light. But out front, he had a little sign, "For rent, $3,500, two bedrooms with a loft." It was the middle of a Saturday, I'm like, "Where are all the people?" And then you walk three blocks up and you go to Avalon, and there's 10 people with light out front. And he, as the business owner, thinks that he can get that same price, what they're charging, at the Avalon. And he's sitting on a week's vacancy, two-week vacancy, two-month vacancy, chasing after that dollar amount that he sees everywhere else that he's not getting. And so now, he's screwed himself. And he didn't even know he was doing it because he thought that's what the market would allow. As a savvy property manager, as someone who has rented multiple apartments, who's actually trained in the market, it actually is very difficult for me to even see how the market works. If you let somebody with just one building or two buildings, who's only been doing this for maybe five or 10 years, and they've had it easy this whole time, and suddenly the market flips on them, they're not able to catch up, they're not experienced in that kind of market thing. So we're not only hurting renters, we're hurting the small business owners, the guy who's actually keeping us housed in the city. So my number-one policy is to create a rent control system that protects affordable rentals in the city. So that's my first point of contention. Yes, any questions on that?
Yeah, sorry, just to clarify if I understand you correctly. You're saying if by placing restrictions on these large units, that's going to drive the rent down for smaller, for everybody?
Because the opposite has been happening. Before the large businesses came in, rents were fine. Nobody, I mean, everyone complained about the rent because that's normal. But the price was not jumping $100, $150, $200 in a single year. That's what we've seen in a lot of cases. Because what happens is when these big guys come into town, they find what the market will allow and they maximize that profit. So they'll actually charge above $50, above-market rent. When that happens, they start to get high turnover. So they've kind of shot themselves in the foot. They've created a system where they need high turnover. Because nobody could sustain that price. If you get a job working on a TV show on Warner Brothers, yeah, sure, you're making great money for like six months out of the year, and now you've got nothing. But you've got that great paycheck, and maybe it's your first job with a studio, maybe it's your first union gig, you're like, "Oh my God, yeah, great. Want to get a cool apartment right down the street? I'm going to live in Burbank, I'm going to live in the high-rise." And you say, "Okay, sure, $3,500 a month, no problem." You're dead broke at the end of six months, and you've got to break your lease, or maybe you only signed a six-month lease because that's how long your job was. When you leave, they've got all your money. You didn't save up anything, you didn't build any equity, you didn't invest in the city. So you're done with your job and you move back home to wherever it is. And that single, that single sort of transient renter, so to speak, is not just, they're not alone. There's multiples of them, thousands of them. And when we start to see tens of thousands of people coming in, churning and burning throughout the year, and it may only look like one or two people is getting hurt by it, but when these companies see this mass, this mass moving in and then exiting out, they think to themselves, "Oh, well, great, I'll just keep working on that turnover." And so they slowly drive with the market, drive with the market, and then everybody else gets screwed.
Oh, follow-up question. That's okay. Can you help me understand what types of restrictions will be placed and how it works? Or I don't know if that's good for right now.
No, that's fine.
Can you repeat as well?
Okay, so she's asking what kind of restrictions we're going to put together. So first and foremost, if you live in a building over 50 units, you only get to rent a month. So there's no long-term lease agreements. What happens when you walk into these places? The first thing they do is, "Well, how long are you going to stay?" Which is preposterous because if you've ever rented a building, if you've ever owned a building and wanted to rent, you always want the tenant who stays the longest. That is where your money is. If you have to do turnover, if you have to change over the apartment, if you have to like fix everything up or whatever, that's money out of your pockets. You want a nice, consistent, long-term renter. They don't want that. They want high turnover. So they ask, "How long are you going to stay?" "Well, I mean, what does it matter? I just want to live how I want to live." And they go, "Okay, well, a three-month lease is $4,000 a month. That same apartment at six-month lease is $3,800 a month." The same apartment. They're charging you the different price for the same unit.
But what would month-to-month do? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that, wouldn't that in a way help the big rental company to increase the rent per month? Would they have, if there's no contract, wouldn't they be able to say, "Okay, well, raise your rents a month."
Sure. You have to pair it with a rental price cap per year. So what we would do is, on these large buildings, we'd say, whatever inflation was for the previous year, so like in 2016, national inflation rate was 1.7%. You would say, "All right, you have to go month-to-month. And you cannot raise the rent more than 1.7% each year for that specific tenant." If they want to leave or for whatever reason it gets vacant again, set the price, go for it, do whatever you want, I have no problem with that. You can't use predatory lease agreements where they give you three months and then dangle six months ahead of you, right? Because people who don't know will fall prey to that. And once you're in the door, you can't go above the 1.7%. So it eliminates the two biggest problems that we have, the bait-and-switch for the lease pricing and the lease turnover. And once you're in the door, you're like, "Okay, I want to stay, it's a great price. Okay, great, $2,000 more a month. But I don't have any money to move. I took all my money in deposit and I'm paying 80% of my paycheck to you." They go, "Ha ha, you can't do anything about it." So those are the two biggest problems. So if you combine those two together, you're going to create a system where the guys with these large buildings have to start playing fair. Because that's not what they're doing. And it forces them to now chase after renters who want to stay long-term. It forces them to actually reject people who want to just stay for a month or two. Because now that's actually against them and it doesn't work in their favor. And what that does, then it drives those short-term renters into the hotel business. Now, what we've seen in the last, the last year's budget with the city of Burbank, as you may know, we're in a deficit. The largest percent increase of speculation was on, against speculation, was in the transit tax. And that's from the hotels. So when the hotel, when you move into a hotel, you pay a percentage of tax, and that goes to the city. And that's basically to invest in, you know, high turnover, tourism rates, stuff like that. What we've seen in the last three years, more and more people are not staying at hotels, not paying that transit tax, and finding short, three- and six-month housing units, working at the studio or putting in a job in a construction building, some new project, and then moving out. So we, as a city, are losing that transit tax. We're also losing the employees of the hotel, the maids, the chefs, the people who change over the laundry. So when you move these transient renters from the hotel into the rental apartment industry, you're changing the job base that's, you know, taking care of these people from high-skilled workers and maids and bellhops and concierge to low-skill, low-wage, minimum-wage employees signing lease agreements, spinning signs out front. So not only does it hurt the taxes and the tax revenue that we get, but it also changes the number of jobs that we have in the city. So by creating these restrictions, the leasing, those big companies are going to be like, "Oh, you know what, maybe we don't want short-term leases. Maybe we want to work with guys who stay longer." And then the people who want short-term, they'll move into the hotel business. We create a different economy, we have to go back to that system. And that's, that's the way it was pre-2008. That's, that's how the city ran. We had people going to hotels, working at the studios, working at the airports. They were short-termers, and they had no problems staying at the Holiday Inn. We have a giant Holiday Inn, yes.
But isn't some of that just Airbnb? I mean, isn't the whole hotel industry, except the internet, like people are just finding short-term rentals somewhere? And I guess the follow-up question is, is this happening at hotels? I feel like I see a lot of Burbank, downtown Burbank development plans that seem like they're going to be new hotels. And where I said, I'm like, "Why aren't you building more apartments? People want to move here, it's a great city. Why don't you build affordable apartments instead of hotels that people are looking to be in for a little bit?"
Of the seven new buildings built, only one is a hotel. So it's an imbalance. With this high turnover rate, with this amount of three- and six-month leases, we should be building more hotels. More hotels, employ more people, higher skilled wages, and create that transit tax that pays back to the city. Most people who stay at hotels also have a different mindset. They're not getting an apartment, buying a car, sort of settling in and taking advantage of the city for a short term and then moving out. Most people who stay at hotels use taxis and ride-share services and don't add to traffic. It's a very different mentality to do that.
Is Burbank taxing, like home sharing, or is it that kind of thing?
No, Airbnb is tricky. It actually doesn't affect most hotel goers. The people who use Airbnb, and they've done studies on this, the people who use Airbnb are not workers who are going to be employed for two to six weeks. They're not people who are looking to, you know, you're not going to get a bunch of Caltrans workers from San Diego coming up, working on the freeway, and staying at Airbnb. They're either going to get a nice apartment for a short-term lease or they're going to stay at a hotel. And that's usually because it's on the company dime or whoever their employer is, they have, you know, a paycheck that's given to them.
And why did Santa Monica and West Hollywood ban a bunch of Airbnb for short-term leases or short-term rentals?
Because they don't offer.
Because they're like performing the hotel industry.
It's not. They're mistaken. They actually are mistaken. I've seen studies in San Francisco, I've seen studies in New York, I've seen it in St. Louis. The kind of people who use Airbnb are the kind of people who look for Motel 6s and cram people in, you know, six, seven, eight at a time. They're, they're the ones who use the Grubhub. They're the ones who wouldn't normally stay at a hotel even if they wanted to travel at that price. They're always looking for a deal. This, the idea that Airbnb is drastically changing the hotel market. It was a big fear that create, came out of San Francisco, they did the studies, it was rumored to be false, but then you have places like Santa Monica like that who get scared, "Oh, we have to stop everything." It's not, it's not a thing, it's not a reality. It is, it is so negligible in the market that it can't affect the large-scale operations. And I've studied it and I've looked into it. Because I was a property manager, I had to find, you know, my boss. "So we can't allow Airbnb in the building." "Okay, great, we look into it, we do the studies." I'm a private property manager. It's a big fear. Yeah, it has, it really does. Yes?
Isn't there a concern that the Airbnbs are also thinking of a lower rent opportunity for tenants? Because cities like Paris have been...
That was a concern in Berlin as well.
Yeah. When you have a new system like Airbnb, and when it comes to any new market, people jump on it, it explodes, people take advantage of it. And then when people realize its effectiveness, it starts to peter out. The very base system of Airbnb, if you've ever stayed in Airbnb, the person already has to have the building or the apartment. So that person is basically creating their own internal economy. Because it's internal, because it exists with them at their price, it's not going to affect the greater Airbnb. In fact, if anything, it makes that owner or renter more solidified in that market. It makes them more consistent in paying, more able to create a stable market. And again, all the studies have shown that it's a very, very small impact on the market. We can mandate it, we can add it, say, "A, you can't do any Airbnb." It would be almost, it's nearly impossible to enforce, and the net result is negligible. So, yeah. And again, I've done all these studies, I can share that with you. So, yeah, this is, it's a side topic, yes.
So the last, I don't know, year or a while, it's taken in that area, Verdugo and First and Renneder, two hotels, two for sure, right on San Fernando. And then there's the one that was there for a few years, coming down, close to the freeway. And then there's the IKEA that's going in, oh, that area, I don't know. Because I live over there, I'm hiding clearly, worrying about the traffic. But I'm looking at these hotels in the city of New York. Do you really need that many hotels in Burbank? Is there really a niche for it?
We don't, there is not. And that, that, sorry, she's asking about, do we need all of these new hotels? And like I said, they're, they're only building very few, but at the same time, all of them don't need to be built. What is happening currently in this city is a result of the lack of housing being built in Los Angeles. So what happened in LA is very targeted areas in downtown, along Wilshire, and then near Hollywood and East Hollywood. Other than that, in most of Los Angeles, developers are not being allowed, they're not being granted permits to build new housing. So we're seeing sort of like this push into Burbank, into Sundale, even a little bit into Pasadena of developers, large-scale developers, not getting their approvals in LA, so they're coming to us. Because we have the ordinance in place. We're rent-control-free, we have all of the business development happy taxes here. It's a very low-tax city. And so a lot of these guys are coming here and seeing us as, you know, the easy pickings. And so my issue is, no, we don't need them all, but at the same time, which ones are coming? And how do we, how do we manage the ones that have been approved? Because the current city council has allowed a lot of developments to happen without realizing all of these developments are happening at the same time. It's like they're, you know, they have a very, they have blinders on them. They're very closed-minded in the approval process. They're, they're looking at individual buildings on approval basis. They're not looking at a large home. And when you, when you work at the city council level, you have to take in the fact, the entire economy, you have to take in the fact, what's happening in LA, what's happening in Highland Park and Sundale, what's happening in Sun Valley. They're building a bunch of new stuff all the way up in Sun Valley and in Sunland and, and nothing even in North Hollywood. So you've got to look at these borders and why the cities are doing one thing and why some other cities are doing another thing. So for me, the biggest issue is, "All right, we already proved them, that's fine. Let's try to put a little stopgap on this. Let's try to limit how impactful these new buildings are going to be so that it doesn't disrupt the market already. And maybe we can start some slow growth, and maybe we can manage the damage that's already there." And so that's basically what I'm trying to do. And again, a lot of this has to be debated, and it has to take the city council. We're going to bring in, you know, a lot of property managers, a lot of realtors in the area. We're going to look at the city planners, the planning board office, the city manager's office, and we're going to target which buildings are the most egregious and how to best accommodate.
I'm really happy that they're building all these new buildings. I don't want to let them, so generally pro that. But I think my concern is making sure that they're for everybody. That they're, so how do we, is there a way to continue to build new apartment buildings to let new people in so that we don't, you know, if that's the case, we don't let new people in, then they become restrictive. And people who bought here 20 years ago have a $1.5 million house, but nobody else can come in. And that, that doesn't seem fair to me. But how do we make sure that they're affordable for all kinds of families?
Sure, sure. How do we make sure all of the development is good for everybody? What we're seeing right now is new developments only on the high end, right? The average of the new, of the six most recent buildings approved, of most recent apartment buildings approved, the average rent is $4,000. That is a federal rate, that is ridiculous. And that is a true number. That is an absolutely true number. I can't afford that! That's, there's no, there is no middle ground, right? You can't find any affordable apartments. And when you create that vacuum, there are people who are going to jump in. The homes that we have now are going to increase in price because there's no new people coming in. So the value of that house is going to get very, very expensive. And what I fear, and this is what I've seen happen, I saw it happen in Brentwood right before the market crash. The house prices get so exorbitantly high, you would be a fool not to sell. And that may sound great to the people who already have a home here, but what about the people who want to stay? What about the people who want their kids to grow up here, their grandkids to grow up here, to give that house to somebody? If you're the only person on your block who doesn't sell and everyone else leaves, who's going to move in? Who are the people that could afford $2 or $3 million homes? It's not going to be their first home, it may not even be their second home. Who are they putting in there? Are they just renting it out? Are they going to turn it into something else? What is the future? And it becomes an unknown. It may all work out fine, or maybe it won't. We don't know.
You're also driving out the people who keep these, these businesses afloat. I mean, San Francisco is the big problem, you know. The people who are actually working in the city who are living in Oakland and further out. And that was just...
It doesn't, it doesn't help the people in the city. And once you drive up the prices and now people have to move out, now you're creating a commute system. Now the traffic goes up. And so every problem that happens in the city gets aggravated and doubled and tripled. So, so my issue is exactly that. Yes, building and development, that's fine, you need growth. You can't, if you don't grow, you die. But what kind of growth are we having? There's no, I haven't seen them approve, you know, 100 single-bedroom condos for $250,000. I didn't see that building go up. I didn't see, you know, a bunch of little studio apartments, 200-unit apartments being built downtown or near the studio. That, that wasn't approved. Where are those buildings? Where are those designs, right? So that's what we need, that's what we need to see to combat these large guys, right? The big, expensive, overpriced, well, something like that, oh, whisper me. These, these large apartment buildings. And, and at the end of the day, we still need some sort of control on these larger apartment buildings while we work to create that, that middle-class system and that stopgap in the middle for people who want to, you know, slowly grow and do it.
Side note on that, if we are doing this development, whether it's high-end, low-end, or what, if we're having this kind of development, what is the infrastructure like in Burbank to handle this influx?
So we also, so you are right, we need to build more infrastructure. The biggest problem we have for the residents who are here is the traffic. And, and that is because half of the people who work in Burbank can't afford it. I've talked to a thousand business owners. And I say, "Oh, great, you own a business here, I'm running for city council." They go, "Oh, well, I can't help you, I don't move here." I'm like, "What? Okay, great, now what are we going to do?" So when we, when we start to build new apartments and new condos and small houses, something people can afford who actually live here, we need to build the infrastructure that's in it, all right? So that means, you know, better schools, we need the elementary schools. As you start to build, you've got to take in more kids, so we can build attachments to that. We've got to build, you know, better streets, we've got to have more police, more fire, all of that stuff. So one of the biggest problems at the city council level is this budget crisis that we're getting. In addition to rent control, and I know a lot of people are not going to like the sound of this, we're going to need to add a house tax. The reason why I want to add that to the rent control. If you own a building and you have 100 units, and whatever you buy, whenever, when you bought that property, your property tax is assigned to you at that level, right? And it grows a little bit with Prop 13. But if your apartment is empty, you pay the same property tax. If your apartment is full and you're charged a full rent, you pay the same property tax. So regardless of how many units you have and how many people are in there, how much money you make, your contribution to the city is exactly the same. And I don't think that that's fair. I want to put in a one-quarter of 1% tax on all rental properties in the city of Burbank. So if you have $1,000 a month rented, $2.50 goes into the general fund. Not a lot to ask. If you have a $4,000 a month apartment, $10 goes into the general fund. Though that little bit of tax, one-quarter of 1%, would add $1.5 million a year to our general fund. That is a huge number that could help with roads, help with schools, you know, putting together police and fire, adding more jobs to the city and the Department of Water and Power. So we need the infrastructure built if we're going to have more people in. So it is sort of a, the negative side of what we have to do. And, you know, I'm trying to come up with options here, trying to help the people out. But at some point, if you are renting here, you have to invest back in the city. You have to, you know, monetary contribution. Because right now, if you rent, none of your taxes go to the city. If you rent and you don't work in the city, you're not contributing, you're just not. And, and that's, you know, fine and great for the people who rent here, but what about the, what about the jobs, what about the citizens?
Along with infrastructure, your third point on your sheet, the police department.
Yes, yes. So one of my biggest issues with the police department is that, again, the guys who work here, they're in officer uniform, they have a badge, they don't live in Burbank. They don't live here. And so, once we get the budget back in line, my first order of business is to get their numbers back up because they're down, I think, four full-time officers, and give them a housing credit. So that if they want to live in the city of Burbank, make it optional. Some guys are like, "I've lived here 15 years, I'm okay, I need to move away." Everyone knows my face, I've arrested half the town. You don't have to live there, that's fine. But young guys, the rookies, the guys moving in, to get them familiar with the town, to get them to know our faces, to understand the city and how it works, I want to give them a little bit of a housing credit. Something to offset the price of, it's expensive to live here. And so that, that is factored into that, that infrastructure. And again, that comes after we balance the budget, we've got to get numbers up to running. But it's definitely on the table and I will not forget about it. That is one of my priorities.
There's one thing about, you know, I know money is a big issue. Money, 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 it's all about money. But the thing about it is, I've lived in Burbank for over 20 years. And what makes Burbank Burbank is that it has a very specific identity. I mean, I've seen Magnolias here blossom. I mean, I've seen Magnolias here blossom. I live right across the street from Horse Property and live in South East Place, which is, you know, also one of the very cul-de-sacs that still exists. But, you know, that, that therein is, is history, identity. And what I'm beginning to see is, you know, what, what happened in Santa Monica and all these other, you know, is this Cyrano, you know.
Corporate acquisition?
Yeah, and, you know.
Franchises moving in, the same cookie from the Walmart.
The whole idea thing really bugs me, honestly. And when Walmart was, you know, and the nice thing about people in Horse Property is they get cranky when things aren't going right. And, because we had a Whole Foods, they were pining on building on the corner of Main and Alameda, which was just the most retarded idea on the planet.
The, the.
But that's, you know, Horse Property was, you know, that's part of our identity.
The Whole Foods got great revenue in the Tolaria project that's happening over on the west side. And their sweetheart deal was that the original designs at the Tolaria given to city council was to include one large brand name franchise shop that would attract customers and then four or five smaller satellite mom and pop shops. That was the original plan as it was presented. Once they got the permit and got the approval and they made the deal and the owners and the developers went out and tried to find somebody, they got Whole Foods. Whole Foods said, we get the entire place, no mom and pop shops. And you know what the developer said? He's like, Ayo K. So there are now four less Burbank-owned shops that could have been built next to a large, you know, a magnet store.
Right.
Where was the city council on this? Where was the design? Where was the planning board saying yes and saying no? They did, they gave, the developers gave us one property, one design, and then they said, no, we're actually going to do something different. So when we as citizens sit back and let the city council do what they want and let the developers pitch their ideas and close their meetings, things like this happen. Things like this slip away. Have you seen the Pickwick project that they're building now?
No, I've seen, yeah, I've seen what they're doing with Pickwick, but I'm not exactly sure.
So the Pickwick, as many of you know, is, you know, old time, they have a bowling alley.
They have a bowling alley and ice skating, ice skating rinks.
They've done all kinds of stuff.
Again, and the Equestrian Center, you know, they just, they just redeveloped. Riverside Cafe is now a new place.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they haven't, those, those things have been there since I moved here.
And they haven't secured 100% on what they're going to do. But one of the people who've pitched the design is either a water scale hotel or a bunch of apartment buildings, or mixed use, you know, small retail on the bottom and apartment homes on the top. This is what's happening. People are pitching these ideas and you and I are at home, you know, on our own time, watching TV, playing on Facebook and not realizing what's happening. The, the very impetus of my campaign is to talk to you guys.
You mean Pickwick is, is going to be replaced?
They're, they're going to, they're not making any money on the bowling alley. It's happening. They are looking, they're actively seeking out some other form of revenue. If you tear it down, it'll be something different. That's what they said. Go to their website. It says it right there. We're looking for something else. If you've got ideas, send us stuff. And of course, the one with the sweetest deal, who gives them the biggest profit margin, that's what they're going to go for.
You could get the Rancho out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go to the city council and raise the count. That's the only way they're going to take their profits.
Yeah, well, that was, you know, Rancho, the Rancho, that, that's right in Rancho.
Right, that's how I say it. You guys are going out to the city council, get everybody from the Rancho down there because they're not going to do anything unless you guys raise out.
Because that school, uh, the new school that just went in, it went in, there was something else that they were trying to put in there and they found that tooth and nail.
Yeah, and that's when you guys are aware of what's happening. What we've seen over time is city council will make these deals, they'll sign off on stuff, and then this is true.
Question?
Yes?
With the project over here, where the church and the temple should be.
The, the new Ikea or the old Ikea spot?
No, no, the where people should be.
Tolaria, would you call it?
Tolaria, yeah, okay.
So now Warner Brothers Music Group is saying that they're going to vacate their building and move downtown. They built that building from scratch specifically for them. What is, I mean, is the Tolaria project is bad for them or are they just looking to be hip? Or do we know?
The, well, at the end of the day, you cannot tell a business what they can and can't.
Right.
However, the city council and the planning board is the final say on approving permits and building plans, all right? So when someone wants to move into a place that's already been zoned and it's a similar business, they don't have to change it over, there's not much you can do.
Right.
But when you want to raise an entire place to the ground or you want to completely change an entire demographic of a neighborhood and either put in a new business or move out a new business, the city council has a tendency to simply look at the profit margin. Well, who's paying the most? What kind of deal are they getting? What's going to be our property tax? Because for them, there's fear of, oh, we have, we have to fix the budget. We have to fix our budget. And yes, we do, but we are not going to fix a future budget by relying on property tax that's set at the year something. You have to create a mobile, growing economy. So when we look at these big projects moving in, who's it going to help? Is it going to be sustainable? Is it going to help everyone out? Or are we all going to lose our paychecks and have to move out? So Warner Music Group, you know, Warner Brothers is a lot of business.
Absolutely.
They're great. They're, I love the studios. They put a lot of money. Their taxes, you know, they, they basically run by half the city and it's fine. And they love, it's a very conducive relationship. So when they want to move, okay, let's talk about where are you going to move? Are you going to get closer to your location? Are you going to move on a big street where you can handle a lot of traffic? Are you going to impact a neighborhood that's, that's not supposed to be there? We have to be able to, we have to be looking at these activities. And then, as a city council person, I have to tell you these things. Because there are a lot of people who don't show up to city council at this every day, who don't see the planning board or the regulations. I'm, I'm very good with social media, with email, with Twitter. Thank you for coming. The communication has to work both ways. What you guys are worried about, I need to hear it from you. And at the same time, what I see with experience with talking to the city manager, with seeing from the, uh, what I get from the planning board, I have to tell you what else. And not just my own spin on it. I got to tell you the good and I got to tell you the bad. Too mu, too many times over the last three, four years, the city council has pitched us this grand idea of, look at this wonderful thing that we're going to vote on. It's fantastic. Well, where's the other side of it? There has to be an outside. There's, there's no way that everything has been a magical, wonderful, blissful property that's being constructed or vote that's happening. There has to be an outside and we need to be communicative about that. And they have been. So they've been selling us a bill of goods and you open it up and there's three more pages under there that nobody knew about. And now we're just starting to figure it out. So that, that is one of my core tendencies to be communicative, both the good and the bad and receptive as before. Which we don't see in most city council governments. We haven't seen this one.
Do you know if, if the Rancho people are aware of what's happening?
They are aware. They're, they're, not all of them. Some of them are busy with their day-to-day lives, but there is a loud voice coming out of Rancho. And I feel that because of the uniqueness of that part of town, they are much more inclined to be protective of their neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, they, Disney's been trying to keep them from here.
So I think we could all in the city take a note from the Rancho people. They vary, uh, aware of how they're doing it. They're, you know, they're protesting. They're, they're coming down to city hall en masse, like 50 people showing up and saying, no, no, sorry. During the comments section, everyone gets five minutes. 50 people, five minutes. They're taking an hour and a half and they're yelling at city council.
When are those meetings?
City council meets every Tuesday. If you go to burbancca.gov, you can see the agendas that are listed so you know what's coming up. They have to post it a week ahead of time. And they follow, they follow the order exactly as it is. And, you know, there's a section for comments after every single agendaized item. And you can just stand up and get to the microphone and you can talk directly to the city council and give them what for. Or tell them they're doing a great job if you like what they're doing. So, you know, it goes both ways. I've seen that too. So, yeah. So that, that's what we need to do. We need to create a, a movement of people in the city getting involved, showing up to meetings like this, talking to not just me, there's, you know, by the end of April, we're going to have four other city council members. So we need to talk to them. Two of them are still incumbents, you know, they're not up for reelection. But they'll still listen. You have to knock on the door, you got it. Get their email, get their phone number, show up to city council and make your voices heard. I don't have all the solutions. I'm not perfect. I don't, you know, I'm not a magic seeing eye. So I need information from you guys. If you see something that's, that's going on and I haven't picked up on it, you know, we, we got to, we got to talk. We got to talk about this.
I'm curious about the Equestrian Center because, I mean, pending upon our current leader of the country, we may.
It's an iffy word.
Well, it doesn't even apply. The, apparently the 2024 Olympics are, you know, LA is trying to get the 2024 Olympics here. I mean, the Equestrian Center was built for the 72 Olympics. I'm curious if, if that would come back into play. Is that too far?
I mean, obviously in 2024, we'd have to start the, the fishing now. I have to look at the budget for that, what we would get out of that. Uh, one of the biggest problems for the Olympic committee is finding a city that is not actively great. If it's coming to town, if you do it in a small state that doesn't have the infrastructure to actually control the city. If it's a city that can handle it and can take in a lot of tourism for a week or two, it can be a very big boom. So, you know, I'll look at that.
Did it have a better framework around the LA side?
Uh, I mean, even if it isn't, they, you know, when the Olympics come to town, they ask everybody, hey, you got to use a lot of resources like that. My, my other, my middle, we talked about my, are you policing and my rent control? One of the other factors of my candidacy is homelessness.
I was going to ask, if, how are we handling homeless now? I mean, if you're found homeless, what happens?
So you got a couple of options. The police department in Burbank knows the rules and the laws set by the ACLU and set by, you know, disability rights organizations. It's not illegal to be homeless, right? If you are on city property, if you're on a park, if you're in a library, if you're on the train station, technically it's city property. You can be there whenever you want. There, it's, it's public open space property, the sidewalk, the, you know, anywhere you want to go. So, uh, the police are being very careful with that. They're being very mindful of it. In fact, they've even created a new program, the Burbank Mental Health Team, Burbank PD Mental Health Team. So if any issue arises, not just to those guys, but anyone, if you're a resident and you have issues and you have a relative that has mental health problems, you can call that specific team and they'll send that team and they'll train, you know, drug addiction, mental illness, all of that stuff. So they're doing really well with that. What we have in place in Burbank are a couple of options. We've got the BTAC, the Burbank Temporary Aid Center, that is down on Burbank Boulevard. And you can, you come in, you see the same friendly faces there. They have a huge budget. They get a lot of donations from Warner Brothers and Disney and, you know, they have a lot of money behind it. It's great. So they've got a pantry and they've got a shower facility. They get you a change of clothes, they, you know, hot meal, all of that stuff. And they say hi to you and then they send you on your way. And it's open 9 to 5, Monday through Friday, and it's closed at 8. I was there on Thanksgiving and the doors were shut. So it's not full service as I like to call it.
Is that a private?
It is a private, it is a private organization, yes. I believe it's a nonprofit, yeah. Uh, and, and their system, to me, it's a bank. It, it solves you in that moment, on that day, and that's it. And you're going to be there tomorrow because your problem hasn't been solved. You don't have a child yet. You didn't get the medication you need. You didn't deal with any drug addiction you may have. You didn't get any federal assistance programs, you know, help down. You didn't get your SNAP benefits, your disability, whatever. They don't do that there. You come in, great, here's some great stuff. All right, off you go. Second to that, we have what's called the Family Promise, which is a network of churches and synagogues in the area, religious affiliations that actually take in. However, it's very limited on who they can take. You can't be, you know, no mental health, no drug addiction, no, you know, no PTSD, any of that stuff. Because what they do is they put you in a home with one of their congregations. You actually live with a family. So, you know, either it's individual or a family or some of the kids. And it's great for those people. Anyone who's gone through the Family Promise, I think the Family Promise has like an 85, 90% success rate of getting people back on their feet and not leaving them again. So it's fantastic. But again, it's a very narrow scope of who they can help. And that's fine. Um, and then finally, if you can't find services in Burbank, people go to Essentia in Glendale, which is, you know, a full-service shelter with social workers and whatnot. Or they can go up to, I think, Sunland has the same kind of thing, a full-service shelter with social workers. What I want to create here is change the BTAC. I want to rezone it because right now it's just commercial property. I want to rezone it to mixed-use, where it's commercial, residential. And I want to build a hospital-like facility in the back or on top on the second floor to take in the people who absolutely need that little extra help. Someone who is, who needs mental health treatment, who needs medication, who has PTSD, veterans who need benefits, who simply don't have the wherewithal to fill out the paperwork, right? I want to get those social workers in there who are experienced with this kind of work, who know what to do, know steps A, B, and C, gets you on your feet, find you a job. Find you an apartment once we start building affordable ones. Get you back to where you want to be. And, and we don't have 9 to 5, Monday through Fridays at the BTAC. That, in the long run, is not going to help. It's, it's, it's doing short-term work. I mean, even 7 a.m. to 7 p.m., seven days a week, 7, 7, 7, that would be great. You know, it doesn't need to be 24/7, but at some point, we have to look at, you know, homelessness is not 9 to 5. It's all the time. Because last year, we had 78 homeless in the homeless count. This year, we had 158. That number is going up. Last year, the homeless count was 78 individuals in Burbank. This year, it's 158.
And that's individuals, not individuals. Because I know families, because I work for schools, I know families that are transitional.
Sure, sure.
Full families that are, that are either living with families or have been, or scared by Burbank into transitional highs.
Thank you. Have a good night.
This is just people.
Yeah, these are people on the street, in, in the open air, you know, at the will of the elements. Because what we're doing is not helping.
Yeah, is there a way to get housing for them faster than waiting for the projects and developments?
Part of my rent control ordinance includes a 10% building units for housing, specifically federally mandated, state mandated, Section 8, assisted housing, that kind of thing.
So 10% of every unit building?
So if you build 100 units, you got to build 10 that are portable. That's what we need. Because these, these, uh, these, if you build a bunch that nobody can afford, then nobody's going to move in. But at some point, we have to take care of people who need it. And, you know, federal assisted, uh, Section 8 housing is extremely successful. What we've seen, what we've seen over time is that if you take these units and you spread them out across the city and you make each building do a couple, yes, a couple, you make each building do a couple, it's going to, uh, help everyone and these individuals. Because you have some people who are on disability, some people who are on social security, some people who just simply can't afford to get off of it. But they're no less people like you and me. They still have to go shopping. They still have to go, they got kids and family. So putting these people in, 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 uh, new buildings actually creates a longer tenancy. It creates stability for the buildings. Everyone I know, every property owner I know who's ever done federal assisted housing loves it. But there's also a lot of building and developers who've never done it, who refuse to do it. And it's this weird elitism that they would never allow someone like that in their building. Even though they're just regular people, they just happen to be on a fixed income. So that's, that's the issue. So I want to create a system where we have those people coming into the BTAC, getting treated by social workers who knows federal assisted housing, who knows. Who are all those people? They're saying hi to you. Are these your guests? Hey, that's my time.
You want my time?
Um, so, so at the, at the very end of the. Are you the mayor? Say hello, I'm the mayor.
He's the president of the United States.
Yeah, yeah, you're about the same education level. All right. Uh, so that, that's what I'm trying to do with that. So we need to rezone it, one. And then a lot of people are complaining to me like, oh, that's a team, can't afford it, the budget. The BTAC and Family Promise, their entire budget, I think it's less than 20%, actually comes from city and state funding, donation to run these places. I would gladly create an entire building fund drive and run the whole thing for a week. And I can get some funds in here from, from. We got a lot of rich, bleeding heart actors who live in the city of Burbank who would gladly spend a lot of money to take care of people. We have a lot of wealthy individuals in the city. We have a lot of wealthy individuals in the city who want to help. So it's, it's not a matter of money, it's not a matter of, oh, the budget. We could build this homeless shelter tomorrow with the exact same budget plan, the exact same city council we have. That's all, we just changed the reason for it to a mixed-use. That's it, that's all we need. Um, and then of course, find the staffing, who wants to help out.
Correct.
So, Lumen, are we all done? Uh, what time is it?
Uh, eight twenty-two here.
Eight twenty-two. Um, does anyone have any extra, any other questions? Uh, uh, I just, I, I, uh, I wanna thank everybody for coming out here. It's very important for me to talk to you guys, to see you face-to-face, to get you involved, uh, at the city council.
Hey, Eric.
Yes.
We did have this question from Facebook.
From Facebook. Uh, Dan Cota asked, "How do you feel about creating more community gardens in Burbank?" Ooh, that would be fantastic. You know, a lot of our, our, a lot of our parks, uh, are very simplified because we don't wanna increase, uh, maintenance, uh, right, currently. Um, but yeah, I have no problem if we wanna do, uh, community gardens in, in other parks, if we want to, uh.
Break down the streets.
Under the power. Under the pa- hey, that's fine, yeah, we can do that, behind the schools and whatnot. A dog park?
Dog park.
We could do a dog park, that'd be great.
There, I believe there is a pseudo-dog park over on Hollywood Way, right where the, uh, uh, nursery used to be.
It's down.
Near, near Clark, near the way through Church, Clark, and, uh, Hollywood Way.
Sheridan Nursery used to be there.
Where Sheridan, I think there is, there supposedly is a dog park there, but I've never really seen anybody doing anything.
Because they have like, you know, the hillside area, there's a lot of areas that could be.
There's a lot of areas that could be used for a lot of things, but they just don't do it. Now, like with the community garden, there's so many, like, empty, uh, lots.
Yep.
And you can just section them off, and, you know, you give it to like one family, who raises their own.
Or, or what I've seen, what I've seen in Hollywood, they take these old lots and they rent them out to local residents. You buy, you know, three square feet by three square feet, and you just pay rent on the place, and you grow it, and you meet your friends and your neighbors, and, "Oh, I'm gone for a week, can you water my tomatoes?" "Oh, sure, sure, yeah, I'll be in, yeah, wherever next week, you take care of mine."
There's a lot, there's one on Sunset that could be interesting to look at, because every time I drive by, it's in full swing.
Yeah, yeah, I used to, I used to, um, see there's this one, uh, uh, on Franklin behind the Thomas Chinese Theater, tiny old garden, and you can.
Yeah, there's, uh, one in Glendale, I go.
Oh, really great.
And there, it's just like an old, we're helping.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do it, we'll do it, community gardens, there you go. Um, any other?
How does, how does the city come east?
Sure.
That means just this, you know, right?
Yeah.
Huge, long range, I mean, you know, we all have to report together with, you know, how, how did the city council interact?
So, uh, uh, in the, since, in LA City, each district has their own representatives, you vote for your city council member.
Right.
In the city of Burbank, everyone votes for all five city councils.
Right.
It's called at large. So if I were to win, I would have to represent every neighborhood. East side, the west side, the Rancho District, the studios, the guys up on the hill, so I answer to everybody.
Right.
Um, and that, that basically means that I can't be, uh, uh, narrow-sighted on, on what, what I know and what my experiences are. I have to go to every neighborhood, I have to understand, what does it mean to actually raise a horse and have a barn and, and take care of that? Because that's a different expense that, you know, eighty percent of the rest of the city has no idea about. So we need, I have to be mindful of that. Uh, and, and, and so for me, uh, getting to know every single little corner of the, of the city is very important. Alright, yes, yeah.
Can you talk about your campaign, like endorsement score?
Okay.
Like who, what, when is the election and all this kind of stuff?
Alright, so the, the, the primary election is February twenty-eighth. There's eight candidates running for three seats.
Okay.
Right? Uh, uh, the top, if there, if, if nobody wins, so if you win fifty-one percent of the vote in the primary, you're, you're a candidate, and you won, you're done, you're good. Whatever's left, if there's one seat left, two seats left, they double that number, and those are the top vote-getters, they move on to the general election. So if nobody wins, and there's still three seats available, the top six vote-getters out of the eight move on to the general election. If one person wins fifty-one percent, and there's two seats left, the top four vote-getters from the primary, how many are ready? There's eight people ready, eight people ready. And, uh, and my, uh, uh, my, my candidacy, I've been, uh, I was the only candidate unanimously approved by the LA County Democratic Party. I was approved by the Burbank Democratic Club. I'm recommended for endorsement.
That will be finalized Monday.
That will be finalized Monday, but I can tell you, I'm recommended for endorsement by the San Fernando Valley Democratic Club. Um, my, uh, the guy who got me into this, uh, is a, is a, he's the former mayor of, uh, uh, Promosa Beach, uh, Mike DiVirgilio, so he's sort of coaching me through everything. He's like, "No, you gotta know this, you gotta know that," and I'm like, "Okay, tell it more, I need more." "Could bring it to me, what do you got?" Um, you know, one of my top donors, uh, is Tony Quolo, the guy, the original sponsor of the American Disability Act. He was Al Gore's campaign chair. So I've got people who, who've seen me, they've talked to me, they've seen my work, and, and they believe in me to know what to do. And not just to have the best plans or the best answers, but after the fact, and once I'm in the chair, to listen to you guys, because the, the constituency is four years long. You know, I, uh, the candidacy is four years long. Yes, can you put it in my pocket or in my pants? In my pocket or in my pants?
Pocket.
Pants. In the belt. Oh, ah, there you go. I like that. How about that? Oh wait, can you read all the papers first, and then we'll go? Um, so I have to be able to listen to you guys, because, uh, uh, I, there's a, there's a phrase that I, I like to use, uh, when I, I teach improv to autistic kids. My son's autistic, I'm autistic, so, you know, we're dealing with a lot of that. I teach improv to autistic teenagers. Uh, one of the biggest, uh, uh, mottos that I tell them is, the best ideas, everybody else's. You're only one person in your head. If I get a room of people together, and we start thinking about stuff, everyone's gonna have a little bit different experience, everyone's gonna have a little bit different idea. So for me, the best ideas are everybody else's. Everything I'm telling you with the rent control, with the homeless shelters, with the local community policing, I think I was those. I found those, and I talked to them, and I'm using the best ideas that I've seen work in different places. My style of rent control is a form that they use in Dubai right now. Because the one, what we've seen in Santa Monica and, and, and LA is not working. That style of rent control is not working, where you target the age of the people. Because what happens is, you have big developers come in, they destroy buildings, rent control's gone, great, we're gonna put up a brand-new Skyline. So they found ways around, what we're seeing in, in cities, uh, like Dubai, like Burbank, they're targeting the big developers, they're saying, "Okay, if you're gonna play ball at that level, we're going to, we're gonna put some restrictions on you, we're gonna make you play fair." So for me, I like to see new ideas. If you have suggestions, email me. If you have a problem, message, find me on Facebook, I try on Facebook all the time, I love Facebook. I'm one of those guys. Uh, so I'll never not listen. And even if I disagree with you completely, if your ideas are out of left field, and I think are totally bonkers, if you've told them to me, and somewhere down the line, another person not related to you, or not associated with you, comes to me with that same idea, guess what, in the back of my head, I'm gonna think, hm, maybe there's something to this. Maybe I need to rethink my position. We don't get that with the current city council. So for me, that's what I'm trying to bring with this. We need to get more people involved, we need to get the citizens of the government involved in the. So please, uh, uh, come join my campaign, and if you can donate, if you wanna buy a sign, they're eight dollars. If you can't afford it, I can give them to you for free, I have no problem with that. Uh, uh, we're trying to get the word out, we're trying to get people involved. Um, you know, I'm knocking on doors, I have an app right now. You can literally open up your phone, and you, you download an app, it's called PolisPLIS, and you can actually canvas with my campaign, find people who are likely to vote for me